What happens with the national grid? With inspecting and trimming trees prior to the winter months? Somebody asked me that the other day and I didn't have the answer.
That's an interesting question, Gene. I uh, I don't have the answer either and I can see Allison looking to write this one down, I think.
Just wrote it down, not sure.
We'll have to get back to you. I'm sure Zach has the answer. I know Zach goes around and trims a lot of the trees himself.
Yeah, no, I would think that it would be a lot easier for them now than in December and January.
Less leaves?
Few, few less leaves in the yard if they did. All right, it looks like we've got six thirty. It's September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, and I hereby call this meeting of the Nahat Board of Selectment Order. Opening comments, Gene?
No, I think I had a few there.
Nothing there? Okay, all right. Well, once again, officially we'll commend Allison and her efforts in that swimming the other day. So that was, that was very impressive and
Yeah.
Yep, well done. Uh, under announcements, we're still looking at the dogs on beaches issue and that remains until September thirtieth, except a doggy beach. Until then, dogs are not allowed on other beaches. Metal recycling pickup, metal white goods, TVs, computers, recycling last Saturday of each month until October twenty-fifth from eight AM to twelve PM noon behind the DPW garage. Certain fees may apply. Visit the community calendar at nahat.org for more information. We have a Market by the Sea on Saturday, September twentieth from ten AM to one PM at Flash Road Park. For more information or to become a vendor, visit the market page at nahat.org or email kaytaylor@nahat.org. I believe, Allison, this is the last Market by the Sea for this year?
I think so, yes.
Does that sound right?
Yep.
So then we have swim, fall beaches cleanup on Sunday, September twenty-eighth, beginning at eleven AM. Volunteers will meet at the Lowlands parking lot and then dispersed to the short beach and doggy beach. Bags will be provided and we suggest bringing gloves. This brings us to the Nahat Housing Authority. And it looks like we are in good attendance. Thank you for joining us tonight. Let's see, we have a joint vote to fill the vacancy on the Nahat Housing Authority. Uh, we have received notice that Dana Sheehan recently resigned from the Nahat Housing Authority as he is now on the Advisory and Finance Committee. Subsection C of section three thirteen of Nahat's town charter states that any vacancy of an elective office with the exception of the Board of Selectmen shall be filled by a majority vote of the Board of Selectmen and the remaining members of the Office Board or Committee. The appointment shall be effective only until the next election of the town, at which time the vacancy shall be filled by ballot for the unexpired term of the previously vacant office. So we'll open the joint meeting and I'll make the motion. I move the Board of Selectmen open the joint meeting with Nahat Housing Authority. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Gene. Any discussion?
Yeah, just that I think that what you've got there is one board's gain and another board's loss. Some Dana's a real plus for either side.
Yep, you're right about that. You're right about that. Uh, so with that, we'll go to a roll call vote. Gene?
Gene Canty, aye.
Rob Tibbo, aye. And we'll have a motion to nominate a candidate. I move the Board of Selectmen and the Nahat Housing Authority vote to nominate Jane Collins for the open seat on the Nahat Housing Authority. Do I have a second?
Second.
So we, oh, any discussion? No discussion.
Another case of the position being filled by a very quality person.
Yes, yes, I agree. And we're, we're very grateful for her to step up. So we have a roll call vote by both the Board of Selectmen and the Housing Authority. I think the Board of Selectmen will go first and then we'll be looking for Kelly. Is Kelly out there? No? Kelly Collins?
Should be.
Do we have a vice chair that could?
Well, Rob, I'm, I'm the chair, Paul Smith. So Kelly's our executive director, so we can move forward with.
Gotcha. All right, all right. I had that wrong. Thank you, Paul.
Okay.
Uh, so a roll call vote for the selectmen. Gene Canty?
Gene Canty, aye.
And Rob Tibbo is aye, and I'll turn it over to you, Paul, for your, your roll call?
Yes, Susan?
Me? Susan Edwards, Susan Edwards, aye.
I'm sorry. Dave?
Dave Wilson, aye.
Um, Paul Smith, aye. And I'm not sure who Walter's iPad is.
Is Susan Bonner on? There's one more. That says iPhone. I'm not sure if that's her.
Susan Bonner, you there?
I tried getting her, Paul. I haven't, there was no answer at a door.
I remember seeing a comment that she was gonna go over and sit with you, Dave, to, yeah, okay. Uh, do we have a quorum?
Yes.
Okay, that's all we need then. Uh, all right, so the joint meeting is in session. Uh, I have a motion.
Did they do a roll call vote on that?
Yes. We all set, Paul? We're all set, right?
Yes, we are, yeah.
All right, so a motion to vote for the candidate. I move the Board of Selectmen and the Nahat Housing Authority vote to appoint Jane Collins to fill the own open seat on the Nahat Housing Authority with a term expiring April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-six. Do I have a second?
Second.
And okay, roll call vote by both boards. Start with the Board of Selectmen. Gene Canty?
Gene Canty, aye.
Rob Tibbo, aye, and now to you, Paul?
Uh, yes, Paul Smith asking if Dave Wilson?
Yes, aye, yep.
Susan?
Susan Edwards, aye.
Paul Smith, aye.
Right, vote is unanimous. Uh, we'll have a motion to close the joint meeting. I move the Board of Selectmen vote to close the joint meeting with Nahat Housing Authority. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote?
Gene Canty, aye.
Rob Tibbo, aye. Go ahead, Paul.
Uh, roll call. Susan Edwards?
Aye.
David Wilson?
Aye.
Paul Smith, aye.
And it looks, looks like we have a new member of the Nahat Housing Authority. Thank you very much, Jane.
Happy to have you, Jane.
Great having all of you.
Have you back, I should say.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Okay.
It's a good thing to do.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rob.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jane.
You're welcome.
Uh, let's see, where are we now? We're down to okay, uh, vote to approve Board of Selectmen meeting minutes. We're only gonna do one tonight. I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from August twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah. Gene Canty, aye.
Rob Tibbo, aye. And Allison, we're going to move the September third on to the next meeting?
Yep. I haven't heard of that, yeah.
Uh, we'll have a vote to approve event request. The Nahat Johnson School sixth grade car wash and Nahat PTO Halloween Bash. Uh, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following event requests. The Nahat Johnson School sixth grade car wash on Saturday, September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, starting at ten forty-five AM at the Flash Road parking lot and the Johnson School PTO annual Halloween Bash on Saturday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, beginning at four PM at the Flash Road parking lot in Little League Field. Do I have a second?
You have a second?
Okay, as for a discussion, uh, we have all proceeds of the car wash will go towards the sixth grade class fund. The Halloween Bash will have the annual trunk or treat from four PM to six PM in the parking lot and the Halloween Bash will be from four PM to eight PM in the top Little League Field.
Is this, this, this is generally a funded and well-attended event. If, if we could, can we put something on the bulletin coming into town, the electronic bulletin identifying the date?
Allison, Allison's nodding her head, yes, and, yep, we can definitely do that. Good.
I'm sure that did. I'm sure the school has even probably already reached out, but I'll make sure of it.
Thank you.
A roll call vote. Gene Canty?
Gene Canty, aye.
And Rob Tibbo, aye. And the next item is Cultural Council and open, we have an open grant application update to be given by Cultural Council Chair member. Uh, let's see, Cultural Council Chairperson Peg Curran is going to join us meeting, during this meeting to give some important updates from the council. And Peg Curran? There she is. Okay.
Just had to unmute yourself, Peg. I could ask you to unmute.
How's that?
Good.
Perfect.
Thank you. Uh, well, thank, thank you for giving me a few minutes tonight to talk about the Nahat Cultural Council. We are a municipal committee consisting currently of six members and we're looking for a seventh. Members are appointed by the town administrator. And our work must follow the procedures and policies of the Mass Cultural Council. We recently received our annual allocation from the Mass Cultural Council, which was fifty-seven hundred dollars, the same amount that we received last year. Uh, we take this money and we award them as grants here in Nahat for cultural activities. Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah.
Ap, applications for these grants are now being accepted through October sixteenth. And this money can be used to, to fund field trips, performances, workshops, public art, classes, et cetera. Projects must focus on the arts, humanities, and science, and these are very broadly defined. They must, the grants must provide a benefit to Nahat residents and projects must be conducted or sponsored by a Nahat resident or a Nahat organization. Examples of grants that we have awarded in prior years include funding for the La Liberté exhibition, a photography exhibition held over the July fourth weekend, chamber music concerts, a qigong exercise program, classes for the Johnson School students, Delvina Theater performances for the COA, and a Bird Buddy camera for the library. After October sixteenth, the council gets together and we reviews the applications, approving them as they see fit and notifying the awardees. We'd really like you to spread the word about this opportunity to provide cultural activities in Nahat. Additional information is available at nahataarts.org. And potential applicants are encouraged to contact us if they need help or if they have questions. And our, we can be reached at culturalcouncil@nahat.org. Beyond that general update, I specifically want to invite town departments to consider potential projects that we could help fund. Before Tony left, he met with the council and talked about standing art projects in the town, which included painted sidewalks and a sign for the softball field at Lowlands. These projects could be funded, it could be funded, and I invite the town to consider such types of projects and proceed with an application process. We don't want to fund something the town budget should pay for, but we could, we would consider projects with a cultural or creative aspect. And finally, one, one other topic that I wanted to bring up was the electronic bulletin board. The council is charged with getting, getting the word out about the application period and about events that we fund throughout the year. And then about the opportunity to solicit specific interests from residents, which we then apply as criteria for the following year. So all year long, the council has to be able to reach people with what's happening. And although we use social media, we are reaching a limited audience, and the same is true of the flyers we distribute through the town. We are limited to five percent of our budget on administrative expenses, which eliminates mailings, which really are the best way to get through to people. We have on occasion provided info via the e-bulletin board, but that has become very popular and competitive in its own way, particularly with important town and police announcements. Um, we're looking to, to get some guidance and support from the town about how we can get the word out and how we could potentially look at the e-bulletin board and its use as a, a, a community billboard. Um, I, we hope to talk to Allison in the next few weeks about that. Do you have any questions for the council?
Is it not now a community billboard?
Well, um, it, it is if you can get in there. Uh, but there are definitely priorities about, you know, parking, taxes, uh, solo the dog. And, you know, we haven't been able to get something posted about this current grant, uh, project. I, and I, as a member of the Garden Club, I know they tried to get an announcement out about their, uh, open house occurring tomorrow. And, you know, they, you know, they, it falls in, into a, um, order of priority, and I can understand that. But there, I think there's more messages to get out than there's room for on that board.
Just one other question, if I couldn't, Robbie, you can take it over. Um, is that your total, certainly not your total budget? It's the fifty-seven hundred is the grant, and what's your total budget for the year?
Fifty-seven hundred.
That's it?
That's it. It, you know, it, we try to fund five or six grants per year, around a thousand, um, depending on what we receive. It is not a lot of money and I think we're probably one of the, uh, smallest allocations in the state because we're a small town.
Interesting. It's something worth looking at.
I agree, Gene. I'm sitting here kind of mulling this around in, in my own mind. Uh, and Peg, I, I apologize. I know, I know that, uh, you've, you're standing in line as far as the use of that signboard. I think I, I, Allison and I talked about two more messages we need to post over the next few days. Uh, and it's already quite busy. Uh, but there's gotta be a way that we can, we can fit this in at some point. Uh, you talked about assisting in some respect as far as, um, uh, the, the softball league, uh, scoreboard or, and, and, you know, both men and women. Uh, has there been any, any, uh, inquiries in that direction just to see if they have interest?
And, no, we, we haven't. Um, and I'm, cause I'm not sure where it's supposed to come from. It wasn't, Tony didn't talk about a scoreboard, but a, a painted sign.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
With the name of the field with the seagull on it. Something to brighten up the town, something to, to show the character of Nahat to cars driving by.
I get it.
The same thing with a, with a sidewalk.
Sure.
If you go into Swambsk, you see some of this public art on display, and I think, I think they're great ideas. Um, but I'm not in a place to organize it.
Well, we're talking, we've been talking a lot about crosswalks lately. I don't know if that would fit. I know, and Swambsk has some very colorful cross, crosswalks.
Yeah, did I say sidewalk? I meant crosswalk. Sorry.
Okay, yeah, okay. Things to be thought and things to be considered.
You know, when it comes to the electronic bulletin board, it, it seems that it's, it's one message at a time, and I wondered, is there a way that you can get the message up about, you know, the, the taxes, and then another message comes up about the Johnson School Halloween Bash, and then another message comes up about apply for a grant. See nahataarts.org.
I, I don't, I don't know if Chief Furlong has something to say about that.
I do. Um, uh, that, that sign can be programmed. Ultimately, the police department, uh, is in charge of that sign. Um, I hear what you're saying. It, it is very competitive to get, especially nowadays. Um, but there are certain standards. As you're driving into town, each frame should be up there for no more than three seconds. Otherwise, someone's gonna be focused on the sign rather than the driving. If we switch signs in the middle of it or alternate signs from one message to another constantly, people just aren't gonna be paying attention to the road. They're gonna be paying attention to the sign and that's gonna cause problems in the long run. So there's reasons why we, uh, run shorts, short signs, short, uh, statements at a time. Um, unfortunately, we can get your sign up. It's just not gonna be mixed in with a bunch of others. Um, we, we like to do one, one message at a time, and that's for safety reasons.
Right, right. Well, it, would it be possible to have a second sign in a different location?
It would be. Uh, those signs are not cheap, and I can attest to that after we, uh, the wind took that one down and, and we had to replace it. So, um, we have a limited budget, as you know. If, if we can get a donation for a, a second sign, absolutely.
I think there's also the challenge of making sure you get, uh, both big and little Nahat. So that's basically our only spot there to make sure we get both sections.
Right. I mean, your, your point, Chief, about distraction, you know, what, what's going to happen, cause I can see it happening there now, are people are posting uh, not electronic signs, paint, painted signs, and I think there were three or four of them up there now. So along with the electronic sign, there's, there's one about the, the Garden Club meeting. There was one about the, the golf, golf tournament over the weekend. Um, I posted one about the, you know, open grant period. So it's not, it's not a, uh, it's not a great way of announcing things. I would agree to it because of the distraction, but uh, maybe, maybe, maybe a, a, a monthly mailing from the town about here's what's happening.
Yep, so I, I will say that the Council on Aging does send out a, a monthly newsletter. They do a great job. Um, I'm sure they'd be more than willing to help you with that. Um, if you want, I don't know if you have the Facebook, we have a pretty good following, so we could easily tag or share any social media that, 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 we, we do get a pretty good following and, and, um, the message does get out through social media through us at least.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, so I'll follow up. I can follow up, Peg, with you. I have a couple of ideas on how we can get the word out. Um, and I can follow up with you, and I do think the message can get up on the message board. I don't know if it would be a consistent message for like a number of days at a time, but I'm sure we could get it up there.
Yeah.
Right. Or particularly like approaching October sixteenth.
Yeah, approaching the deadline.
You know, Tuesday, don't forget, or something like that.
Yeah, I, I think we can, we can work something out, so I'll be in touch with you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, very good. Well, thank you for the update, Peg.
Thank you.
Brought some great questions.
Thank you.
Very good. Uh, let's see, so that brings us to, uh, electric bike and electric scooter laws, and I'll be the first to take the blame on having this on our agenda. Uh, and it's there because I have had a number of people approach me and ask what exactly are the rules? Uh, how, how old should the kids be? How, how fast should they be going? Uh, shouldn't they be registered? How, you know, how is this controlled or monitored? Uh, and Chief, thank you for joining us tonight, uh, and, uh, maybe you can give us a little bit of a rundown on what that looks like.
Sure, so we just recently got some, uh, guidance through Mass Chiefs, which I shared with, um, Allison. I don't know who else she shared that with, but basically, um, our hands are pretty much tied as far as municipality goes. Uh, and, and Dan, please feel free to chime in. Basically, the, the electric bikes, as long as they're, uh, under twenty miles an hour, are considered bicycles. Um, the only speculation, so to speak, is if they're under seventeen, they should be wearing a helmet. Uh, that enforcement does fall on us. I, I don't have, I, I forgot my, I'm at a conference in Norwood right now. Um, I forgot my laptop, so I, I do apologize for being ill-prepared for this meeting, but I, I do have some notes, but, um, we are pretty much um, our hands are pretty much tied as far as um, enforcing and, um, restricting as far as the municipality goes. Um, there, there's two different classes, so to speak. There's a, a low speed. Um, class one is a low speed equipped with a motor that provides assistance when pedaling and stops assisting at twenty miles an hour. And the, uh, the second is equipped with a throttle, a throttle to, to propel the bike at twenty miles an hour and it stops assisting at twenty miles an hour. So they're, they're kind of specific. They don't really, I, I mean, I, I, I guess the scooters do have throttles and pedals. I'm really not overly familiar with, um, the logistics of the bikes or the scooters, but, um, it seems like our hands are pretty much tied and they are considered bicycles.
Okay.
Chief, do they have to be licensed?
No, and, uh, actually, we local police departments are not authorized to require licensing or registration.
Okay.
I, I can add to that, Chief. I'm looking at what you said. It was very, very helpful. Yep. Um, it, it is limited to, there is one or two limitations. One is that anyone under seventeen has to have a helmet on when they ride this thing. Um, and I think we have, we may have a little bit discretion in that. I, I, I do believe the law allows us to prohibit them from being on the sidewalk. Yes. Um, but we have to pass a bylaw in that regard, and I was looking at our police bylaws earlier today, and I didn't see it, but I got caught up on something else as I was doing that. So I think there's some discretion there, but to the, like what you said, class one, class two, as long as it's under twenty miles an hour, there's a lot of stuff they can do. Anything beyond that, and it gets into registration, licenses, and things like that, cause at that point it's called a motorized bike. So anything in terms of twenty miles, miles or less, there's not a ton we can do. Now, keep in mind, um, the, the, the agenda I'm telling you was electric bikes and also motor scooters are not the same thing. And they're regulated differently. So what we're talking about at the moment is just an electric motorized bike with, you know, two wheels, a seat, and, you know, what a bike looks like. When we get into motorized scooters, we do have a lot more control over those. Uh, because the law, um, and I'll read the list that I, I found today. Um, twenty miles an hour is another marker. It can't go more than twenty miles an hour, and it cannot be ridden on state highways. Uh, like this Causeway, I believe, is a, was considered a state highway. Um, you correct, Chief, you can correct me if I'm wrong in that. Um, it can't be ridden after dark or before sunrise. No passengers on these little things. So if we see two kids on, on, on a scooter, not a motorized bike, a scooter, that's, that's illegal. Um, and here's a key part of it. Operators must be sixteen years of age and have a valid license or a learner's permit for, for, for a motorized scooter. That's a big difference than the motorized bike. So with, we have a twelve-year-old running around in an, in an electric scooter. That's an issue. Um, and that's state law. That's not what we're dictating. That's what the state law says. Um, and there's a few other smaller, smaller issues, but that's, those are the big ones. And for, for a scooter, which, you know, has a tall neck and you stand up on it and zoom down the street.
Maybe I missed something there. What differentiates one from the other?
Well, a scooter, a bike looks like a bike, right? You know, you, you sit on it, you have pedals and things like that. A scooter, you just stand on it. And you, back when, when we were kids, you would, you would, you know, motor, you'd ambulate with a, with a leg and you'd push it, but nowadays, yeah, but nowadays, I've never ridden one, but I, I, Chief, is there a button or is there a foot pedal? I don't know. You need to zoom down the street with, without any sort of, um, personal power. It's all electric. I guess some have gas. Yeah, and the, the guidance from Mass Chiefs doesn't, um, differentiate between bicycles or scooters. So. Yeah, right. I guess the scooters are kind of unregulated. There, yeah, yeah. Um, I'll, I'll forward, I'll forward around to some stuff I found today, which I think is pretty helpful regarding the scooter, um, laws. As regards to the Causeway, um, it is, you're correct, and, and it's considered a highway. However, there were signs at both ends restricting bicycles, horses, scooters, pedestrians. Those have been removed. Good, good. Um, okay, yeah. Um, I, I threw the grapevine. I heard that they were removed through local bicycle chapters so that bicycles were allowed there. Allison, I know you're an avid triathlete. I don't know if you heard anything about that or know anything about it?
I didn't. I actually thought the signs were still up.
No, they've been removed.
Oh, interesting.
So we'll see some horses on the Causeway, is that what that?
The state police horses are gonna come down the car. Police horses are gonna come down the causeway.
I'm still waiting for that day. Uh, so maybe this is something as we kind of. Compile the information, Chief, would this be something that you could put on your police website as far as just a page is of, of? You know, these are things to think about if you're buying one of your children a scooter or a bike, uh, where the laws are.
Absolutely. And I, and I've spoken to a couple of residents and, and I plan on having our school resource officer have a safety talk with the. The students at Johnson Elementary, just to remind them of helmet laws and, and safety and things of that nature.
Good stuff. Okay. All right. Well, thank you both. Uh, this is, uh, this has been very informative and, uh. Uh, yeah, it, it, I had a feeling it was going to be something that was kind of operating in a gray area. Uh, just from my side as, as harbor master, I know it took the state, uh, a good number of years to get any kind of regulation together as far as. Power boats were concerned, and that's just coming into play now. Uh, and, uh, you know, from my own experience, that's about seventy years where it was completely unregulated and counting. Uh, but it's, uh, yeah, it, it, it's, it's something that I think is very important. I, I, every, there isn't a day go by for me that I don't see another. Uh, bulletin about somebody who's been badly injured, both the, the, the user of the device and/or possibly someone who got in the way of the device. Uh, and, uh, so I wanted to, uh, see if there was anything we should be thinking about here.
Yeah, someone got killed in Copley Square, or was it Kenmore? One of the two recently. He got hit by an e-bike.
Yeah. You know, they, they're, there's much a motorcycle as I've seen, so. Good. Uh, thank you so much again to you both. Uh, that brings us to ongoing business. Allison.
Yes. Um, so I'm not sure. We don't really have anything for ongoing business, but I have a bunch of updates for under Town Administrator Report.
Take it away.
All right. So first I wanted to talk about the MBTA Linway Multimodal Corridor Project Public Meeting that. The town, um. Was invited to host and it was canceled kind of at the last minute. I just wanted to provide a little bit more background on exactly what happened. I think there's confusion, you know, around, was it canceled, you know, by the town and. And that sort of thing. So I just want to provide a little bit of background on what happened there. Um. So early in August, the town was contacted by the MBTA. Um, to see if the town would want to host a community listening session about, um, updates that the MBTA wants to do to the Linway. The town agreed. Um, we thought it would be great to host it and have residents attend, and the meeting date was chosen for September tenth. Um, we planned to have the meeting in the main hall of Town Hall, and we offered to provide projectors. Microphones and other supplies that the MBTA would need. Um, and then on August twenty-seventh, the MBTA emailed me. And asked if it was possible to have the meeting in a hybrid format. Um, I responded immediately saying that in our main hall, we don't have that capability. Um, but we do have two smaller conference rooms that do offer hybrid capability. However. I felt that this meeting could attract a lot of people, so I would, would prefer to have it in the main hall, which again. Does not offer hybrid capability. I never heard anything from my email message. Um, then I sent a follow-up the day before the meeting was supposed to be held, just seeing if we were setting up the main hall, the. Way in which the MBTA wanted, you know, how they want chairs set up, the screens. And that afternoon on September ninth, um, I heard back from them saying that the meeting location was changed. To North Shore Community College. I was completely shocked. Um, I had everything, all the plans in motion to host the meeting here at Town Hall. And it just took me the rest of that day to scramble around. Um, to notify people who we had coming to, you know, live broadcast the meeting on the television. Um, I had, we had already started setting up the main hall. Um, and then just to get the message out to residents through our social media, through the website. Um, it was a really unfortunate turn of events, and, um, to me, it was just extreme. Extremely bad communication. Um. So I do understand, you know, they said, oh, well, Nahant residents are able to join the meeting at North Shore Community College, and I understand that some residents did end up. Going on September tenth. Um, but the MBTA is giving us an opportunity to re-host a meeting. Um, if we so desire. So I wanted to bring that, you know, before the board and see your thoughts. I know Pat's not here today. I had mentioned it to him. He actually told me today he attended. They had a similar hearing in Marblehead today. That he attended, which was an in-person only meeting. It was not hybrid, which I found interesting.
Yeah.
Um, and he did speak to them and they said, yes, they're willing, you know, to host another hearing in Nahant. If Nahant, you know, wants to have it here. So. Um, I don't know what the, the board's thoughts are, um, on that.
If, if, um. You could almost, I think you and I talked about this briefly, Allison. And you could almost do a hybrid of sorts in town. And include as much on housing as the mind will absorb. Because a number of people, you know, they asked the question, what is the MBTA? You know, what is short-term rentals, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And maybe that's something we could do. Robbie, I just think that discussion was had before.
Um. Uh, and, and Jean, I, I think we'll, we probably will be visiting that. I, I, Allison and I have, have touched base on that. Uh, as far as the, uh, the. Linway Multimodal Corridor. I'm gonna make sure I get the phrases right there. Uh. Uh, I think Allison's question is whether we would want to host another, a, another chance at a live meeting. Uh, and, uh, my, my vote would be yes, uh, at, at this point. Uh, certainly, I, I, I can't promise what the turnout would be. But I think everybody needs the opportunity to speak their mind. Uh, I suspect that it would be a live meeting, just as Marblehead had today. Uh, just to keep things simple and give everyone, and once again, give people the opportunity to speak. Well, how do you feel about that, Jean?
I, I feel good about it, but I, I think I'd, I'd like to know how Allison feels about it. Because given the amount of time and effort she put into it. Uh, this is something that she could take and run with. Or not want to participate in, which I'm sure is not the case.
I, you know, I just wanted to, to talk about it at today's meeting because. It was very disappointing how the event turned out. Uh, I was very much prepared to have it here, and it. Almost looked as if the town aired in, in this, and I want to make it clear that it. This had nothing, that last-minute cancellation had nothing to do with the town. I.
That's a good point.
Had every intention of having this meeting. Um, so I'm happy to, to reorganize it and have them come back out in person. Um, and have an in-person meeting. That's, that's fine with me.
What I'm saying is, given the opportunity, make it a little bit more than just MBTA.
Well, they're specifically looking for feedback on this project. That's why they want to, they're having, they. They wanted to host a meeting in Nahant, Swamp Scott, Marblehead, like all the abutting communities. And it's specifically about the updates that they want to make to the Linway. So they already did Market Street to the Rotary, right, by adding the bike lane. Now they're looking to do updates to the rest of the Linway. Whether it's adding bicycle lanes, bus lanes, more pedestrians crossing. So they want to hear specific feedback on that.
Yeah, this is the section from General Edwards Bridge up to Market Street, I believe.
Correct.
Yeah, and that's, that's where the focus is as far as what their redesign is going to look like.
So they're looking for specific feedback on that before going into a design phase, but then. After that, I'd be happy to have them back another time to talk about other projects.
Oh, absolutely.
I, I came in from Boston today. I didn't see a single bike. Of course, it certainly isn't ready for it, but. None.
I, this morning when I commuted in, I saw a broken down car in the bike lane on the Linway. I'm not sure that, that's the intention of it, but, um. So yeah, so I can reach out to them again and organize, you know, an in-person meeting specifically to discuss the Linway project. And then maybe at another date, Jean, you know, we could have a larger, just post a larger discussion.
Yeah, just something to get. A, a definition for most everything.
Yeah. Will do. Um, so that, that's one update that I wanted to give. Um. The other item is, as we see coming in. The electric sign coming into town. Um, all unpaid utility bills are going to be leaned to real estate. So if you have any outstanding, um, utility bills that haven't been paid by this Friday. Um, it will be leaned to your real estate tax bill, which is set to go out, um, October first. So, uh, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to the Treasurer's Office in Town Hall. Um, if you have a question, if you've made a payment or, you know, anything like that, we can research it for you.
So Allison, when we're talking utility bills, we're talking about water.
Water, sewer, trash.
Okay, all right.
Um, the next update I wanted to talk about, so next Tuesday is a busy day for the town. Um. We are having, or the Planning Board is having the public hearing for the three AM BTAs zoning bylaw draft. Um, which is, I think, very important. There was an article published in the item about it. Um, there's also been ads in the item stating that this public hearing, it's next Tuesday. Um, starting at seven PM in, in Town Hall. It's going to be in Conference Room Two downstairs. Which has hybrid capability. Um, if you don't want to join in person, uh, you can reach out. Um, or I think we posted the Zoom information on the, um, the calendar today. So if you want to join via Zoom, you're able to. Um, just a reminder of what this actually is. The Planning Board's been working hard to draft this, um, zoning bylaw to be, um, in line with the state mandate. That, um, the town as an adjacent small community to an MBTA hub. Um, we have to have eighty-five multifamily housing units, um, on six acres. So. What the Planning Board, um, has proposed a bylaw as well as, um. Uh, district overlay, multi-housing district overlay. Um, all the materials are available on the town's website at nahant.org. So I encourage residents to go take a look at that. If you have comments that you want to be, have read at the public hearing next Tuesday. There's instructions, um, on, on the website about how to email Sheila as Chair of the Planning Board to have those comments read. At the hearing, and then there'll be discussion, um, on Tuesday night.
So Allison, uh, the, the overlay district is an area where. Someone could, would be allowed to create eighty-five units, should they wish to do so.
Correct. Should they wish to.
Yeah, the town isn't obligated to create these housing units. It's just creating a space where. Someone would be allowed to if they wanted to.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
And so also on the website, um, there's a summary of kind of. All the work that the Planning Board did in order to come up with the draft bylaw and, um. The zoning map, the, the area that they selected. Um, so again, I just encourage residents to take a look at it. Participate in the public hearing next Tuesday. Um, because then, you know, after that, after the Planning Board gets feedback, um. Then the Finance Committee will meet and they'll make a recommendation, and it eventually is going to lead to a special town meeting that we hope to have in early November. Um, for the residents to vote on. So we have to be in compliance with this. State mandate by December thirty-first of this year. Um, and you've seen there's some communities in Massachusetts that have, that are not currently in compliance. Um. Probably seen, you know, articles about them and what that kind of means. Um, we could lose a lot of state funding, grant funding. And things like that.
Okay.
So, so the same night, before the public hearing, um, the Board of Selectmen. Um, and the Board of Assessors are going to meet to have the tax classification hearing. So that's going to be via Zoom. Um, at six PM next Tuesday. Um, so this happens at this time every year. Um, and basically the board votes, um, whether they want to have a single tax rate for all, all classes of properties. Or whether they want to have different tax rates. Historically, the town has always voted a single tax rate for all classes of properties. Um, and then once the tax classification hearing is had next Tuesday. We submit the assessor and I, me as Finance Director, submit, um. You know, our FY twenty-six budget and, um, our tax rate calculation to the Department of Revenue. To be certified, and then that'll prepare us to be able to issue real estate tax bills on October first. So next Tuesday is a busy day for meetings, um, but I encourage people to attend both.
Could be very suspenseful as we wait to see what that new tax rate is.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, a couple other things, um, I want to make you aware of. The Nahant Historical Society is having a lecture here at. Um, the Nahant Town Hall on this, uh, Sunday, September twenty-first. The doors open at one-thirty and the lecture will start at two. And the lecture welcomes current owner and developer of the Howe Estate. Um, who is going to discuss all of the renovation, recent renovations to the property. So that should be interesting. Um, and then just one final thing that I have, um, is National Grid has a planned power outage for next Tuesday. Um, beginning at ten PM, um, until six AM the following day. My understanding is they've sent out letters to residents. Um, stating this, um, and if there's any questions, you should be contacting National Grid. Um, the town will also send out a code red alert just to remind everybody that there is this planned power outage for next Tuesday night. Um, and I will also post something on the town's Town Hall Facebook page.
And speaking of power outages, people have asked, what caused that mini outage? Of, uh, I think fourteen households.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure, um, what caused that, to be honest. I was aware when the, when the power went out and. Um, actually Chief Furlong contacted National Grid. They were on-site right away and. But brought power back up relatively quickly, but I'm not sure of the initial cause of it.
Okay, thanks.
Um, and that's, so that's all I have for, for update, my updates.
Okay, Allison, thank you very much. It's very busy, and it looks like next Tuesday is going to be, uh, very busy once again. The good news is that everything has to stop by ten o'clock.
Yeah, or there's no power.
Uh, okay, that brings us to citizens' comment. Anyone have a, a comment they would like to, uh, share with the Board of Selectmen? Going once, going twice. I guess we're in good shape for this week. Um, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
And seconded. Roll call vote?
Jean, can't the eye.
Rob Tibbo, I. Thank you, everyone, for joining us, and, uh, I wish you all a pleasant evening. Good night.
Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Nice seeing you.
Nice to see you, Allison.